Okay, I bring to order our agenda meeting. This is our second evening meeting of this year. At 4:30, we will be convening the Wayne County Board of Equalization and Review, at which time we will be sworn in. Carol will administer the oaths. We'll convene that Board of Equalization and Review. We'll ask Allen for a report, and then we'll see if there's anyone that will be here to appeal the values. If not, we will recess the Board of Equalization and Review until April the 19th at 8:30 a.m. Invocation today is Commissioner Williams, and Pledge of Allegiance will be Commissioner Williams as well.
Mr. Chairman, Dan Root just a minute.
Yes.
Mr. Harson, we want to wish you a happy birthday today. We're gonna get you a cake, but you know, money's kinda tight. So, here's your birthday.
Thank you, sir. I'll take it. Thanks, everyone. Wanting just what I need.
Is that some salty crackers?
Hey, bringing back my childhood. I'm trying to feel young.
Look at this drawer.
This is for Tommy, though.
After the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll have the approval of the minutes of March 15th, and we will now discuss adjustments of the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, and we do have a couple things we do want to add to our agenda. Number one, we do have a presentation from Judge Heath. Judge Heath will be here to talk about the opioid settlement funds that the county will be receiving, and her idea about looking at the 8th Judicial District and working with Lenore and Green Counties as far as a regional effort, as far as an opportunity with that. So, again, that is just to say we're interested, it's not committing us. So, just want to make sure that that's clear.
That's where?
That will be special presentations. If you want, we could put her as first, would you like? We'll put her as first on the special presentations. And then, under Special Presentations, we have a proclamation that Commissioner Foster has asked that we do, is the 2022 Reentry Month Proclamation.
And just what is that?
That is to talk about how those that have criminal records, how we can reintroduce them back into society. And then, after that, under New Business, number two, this is a contract to purchase 7.07 acres located at 800 Corporate Drive in Goldsboro, and along with appropriate budget And then, under Consent Agenda, we have Budget Amendments 405 and 414 that Allison will go over.
414?
Yes, sir.
You have all of these in front of you.
You look under your agenda, I have passed all of this out.
Well, the only question I have is, where are the budget amendments from 406 to 413? Just asking.
I think some of them, they are being here.
Okay.
If they're not, then they were, they didn't make it on this agenda.
Okay. These are important, so you walk them on.
Either that, or they're county manager only budget amendments, so.
And then, also under Consent Agenda, we will add this as number seven, setting of a public hearing for April 19th, 2022, at 9:15 a.m. for the economic consentors for Project Dixie Trail.
And that is where?
That will be under Consent, be number seven.
I'm sorry, give me a second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I thought we were gonna make a separate motion on that, or we just gonna put it on the consent?
We can put it under Consent.
Yeah, let's put that in New Business.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll put that in New Business.
So, that will be item three under New Business.
Right.
All right, and that is set a public hearing on?
For April 19th, 2022, at 9:15 a.m. for economic consentors for Project Dixie Trail. And those are the only changes I have at this time.
But that's enough.
That's enough, yes, sir, it is.
Can you reiterate again on New Business, number two, again? Because you went to lane.
It's the Gambelli property located off of Corporate Drive, the 7.07 acres. And you should have a copy of that purchase agreement. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, and then we are, well, let's go through it, the rest.
Okay, all right. Then, under Special Presentations, again, number one will be Judge Heath. Number two, motion to approve April 10th through 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Wayne County, and our 911 Director, Chris Barnes, will be here to read that. Number three, motion to approve the Month of the Military Child Proclamation, that'll be presented by Heather Winstead. Number four, motion to approve April 2022 as National Association of Counties Proclamation, and I will read that. And then, number five is the Reentry Proclamation that Commissioner Foster asked for. If he's not here, I'll be glad to read that.
I'll read.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. There is probably some changes we need to make to that resolution that I'll hand up to you.
So, which proclamation?
What changes did you have in mind?
No, no, just, I'll.
At Wayne County instead of the city of Goldsboro.
Yeah, and the seal of the city of Goldsboro will change.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Do I seriously not change that? It's embarrassing.
But we'll get you that updated version.
Topographical.
I just crossed it out.
Oh, if you're good, yes, sir.
All right, and we do have an Appoinement Committee?
Yes.
We do have a report from them?
Yes, we do.
And then, we're having a public hearing?
Yes, sir, 5:15, to receive public comments regarding a proposed ordinance regulating shooting ranges within the Planning Jurisdiction of Wayne County, and that's on pages 22 through 28.
And will Barry or someone be hitting that up?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Barry, is that what you?
I'll mumble my way through it.
Do what now?
I'll mumble my way through it.
Okay, you'll mumble your way through it, all right. And once we have the public hearing, are we taking action?
Can.
Can if we want to, okay?
We need to have some discussion on that.
Would you like to, after the public hearing, you want to have some discussion at this time, after the public hearing?
I just want to know what's in it, because I have not looked at it on the computer.
The point is, is trying to protect people in the county. I'd add, if somebody's trying to grow up, shoot in range without going by the NRA rules.
Okay.
So, you're gonna have to have, if you shoot an arrow or a weapon, whatever is coming out needs to go into a burr. So, it's to keep somebody who, right next to a road or a housing project or something like that, makes them comply with the NRA rules. And it's my understanding that local NRA people have looked at it and are very pleased with it.
When it comes to shooting ranges, I just want to make sure that I knew what was going on, because I've already been criticized a lot about in the past, and I just want to make that clear. I want to make sure when I vote on something, I know what's in it, okay?
Mr. Parker, this is for commercial or private citizens also?
It would be for anybody who's setting up a range. Now, it doesn't apply if you're just shooting on your own land.
Okay. But it's still a good practice to, if you're on your own.
It's a safety, it's basically what they're doing is complying with the NRA guidelines when it comes to the safety rules of a shooting range. And that would apply to us if the sheriff were to build a new shooting range or whatever, he would have to comply with it.
And if shooting ranges is already in the county are complying?
They are complying. I talked to Mr. Kinnon.
This would not apply to them anyhow.
Right, but his is actually built to that standard. I actually spoke with him about it, he's in favor of it, so.
So, my understanding is, we currently have no procedure in place to have any control over it, and if someone were opening up a shooting range, there are no guidelines. So, this is establishing those guidelines.
All right, I'm good with that, then.
I guess on private citizens to be held to the same accountability. They should be, but I don't want them enforced.
Okay. Then, Consent Agenda, we're moving to that, Budget Amendments.
Right, I'll turn that out.
Your first budget amendment is number 355 on page 29, I believe it is, and this is for the Jetport. There is $1,576.60 in what is deemed to be uncollectible accounts. There is a memo attached that breaks that down further. There has been attempts, attempts to collect these, but at this point, they're determined to be written off, and they are requesting a budget amendment to do that and approval to do that.
And they're no longer there?
I'm sorry?
They are no longer there, and at this time, this goes back to 2018. We did not even have any written lease agreements on any of this. We now do have written lease agreements. So, it's unenforceable, really.
They gone up on their lease?
They went up?
They're gone up on their leases?
Oh, we did. What does Seymour Johnson use it for? Well, Seymour Johnson, that write-off was something that was in dispute and had been in dispute on those charges, and it was before my time being out there. So, all I can say is, you're not gonna win trying to collect it from Seymour Johnson, so you might as well write it off. I think that's the determination, am I correct, Andrew?
I don't know anything about that.
Okay. You are correct. Okay, I am correct.
We'll collect it from the friend of Seymour.
I hear you.
Okay.
All right.
Your next budget amendment is totaling $58,135.24. Well, that's the total budget amendment. The amount that requesting move is $29,067.62. So, these are a couple of funds, our general, excuse me, Solid Waste Fund and Jetport Fund that should have had rental income credited to those funds from the prior year, and it was not coded correctly when we set up our new chart of accounts in the software, so we're correcting that. We have talked with our auditors, and we're good there, so I just, we wanted to make sure we got this credited to the right funds. Your next budget amendment is for the library. This is to reallocate, raising a reader program, to purchase additional reading materials and replace damaged items, and also to do some advertising for that program. You have a budget amendment for wages. They have received additional grant funds in the amount of $24,388. This is pass-through funds as part of the HCCBG program for Meals on Wheels. We have a budget amendment for facilities totaling $15,600. They are short on their vehicle supplies, fuel and diesel line item. They are reallocating it from existing line items, so they are not requesting any additional appropriation of monies. So, they are thinking that this will take them through the rest of the fiscal year and hoping not to have to ask for any additional money. For the Staff Attorney's Office, you have a budget amendment totaling $1,200, and this is to appropriate funds and revenue for service fees and service fees reimbursed. So, this is money collected that will in turn be paid out as part of the foreclosure We have a budget amendment for facilities totaling $10,000. They are reallocating it from an existing line item and not asking for additional funds. They did have some unanticipated repairs and maintenance of equipment, and so they will pay for that, and then they will also, they've also asked for some additional to get them through the rest of the fiscal year. Okay, your next budget amendment is for Office of Emergency Services totaling $10,000. They are asking to reallocate funds from various line items in their department for the purchase of 10 Harris portable radios from Franklin County. If they, if these radios had been purchased new, the estimated cost would be $44,000, so this is a significant savings for them. You have a budget amendment for Soil and Water in the amount of $5,000. They have received a grant from the Foundation of Soil and Water to purchase a drone for stream cleanout and site visits at farms. The grant money will also be used to train employees to use these drones. There is a really good detailed memo behind it, but this is all grant pass-through money, so this has been given to them for this approved project. You have a budget amendment for the Health Department totaling $18,936.50.
Does that go back, does that include the training for the?
Yes, sir, it does.
And the license, all that stuff for the?
It does.
Okay. I see now.
So, if we need a drone, we know where to go get one. Well, where you go?
Well, we got evidently another of them.
Okay, you have a budget amendment for the Health Department totaling $18,936.50. This is for the Foundation of Health Leadership Funds that were awarded to the Health Department for participating in the Health Leadership Program. They will be using these funds for human resources and professional services-related We have a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $200. This is for donations made to the Sheriff's Office for programs in the memory of John Budget Amendment 378 is for $8,900 for the Facilities Department. They are requesting to reallocate funds from maintenance and repairs of building to capital outlay. This is to replace a Chiller water pump, and this was an unanticipated expenditure that was not requested in CIP. It was one of those surprises, pleasant surprises you get in the middle of the year. They are reallocating it from existing funds. You have a budget amendment for the Health Department in the amount of $18,117. This is for additional funds for the Minority Diabetes Prevention Program, and this will be used to find, for their subcontractor budget with Pitt County Health Department to carry out this program. Budget Amendment for the Sheriff's Office totaling $51.66. This is controlled substance tax monies received, not yet budgeted. Budget Amendment for the Facilities Office totaling $16,132. This is to request money to move from a vacant, well, it's a vacant position in the Fleet Fund, and to move those salaries over to Facilities Office to provide additional salary budget for hiring a qualified HVAC technician. And this will hopefully alleviate some of the cost of having to outsource that out to third parties. Okay, you have a budget amendment for Cooperative Extension totaling $2,500. This is a donation from Southern Bank for the 4H Robotics Club. For Solid Waste, you have a budget amendment for $5,500. This is for the Fremont Convenience Site to drill a new well there. They did purchase, they did budget for this in repairs and maintenance, but the cost ended up being higher than what they anticipated, and so it reached our capitalization threshold. We're having to move it to capital outlay for accounting purposes.
What did they budget for the well?
$2,700. What it says right there, Ridge West, well, it was $2,700.
And then, after the drilling began, they had?
How many go in the well digging business?
They're about, I don't know what size well they're digging, but it's, they ain't cheap anymore, for sure.
And all I got there and want to speak into one commode.
After digging a, but after digging a deep well or a shallow well, I don't know. I mean, depending on where the water's at.
Okay. You have a budget amendment for the library totaling $200. These were donations received to be used for programs at the library. You have another library budget amendment for $2,089. This is to allocate money from the LSTA Scholarship Fund to provide someone to be able to attend the American Library Association Conference this year. Then, we have two walk-on budget amendments. We did request that these be walked on due to time and constraints. The first is number 405 from Services on Aging totaling $24,000. This is a reallocation within Services on Aging budget from general transportation to medical transportation, and this will be used to cover the cost of, you know, dialysis and doctor's appointments. These costs, well, the medical transportation rides have increased, and so they are asking to reallocate these funds to medical transportation. This service is supported by HCCBG funds. Do you want me to pause for a second?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Your next budget amendment is number 414 from the Register of Deeds Office totaling $52,000. This is to appropriate funds for their cot monthly resolution and microfilm usage, and that part is 80,000, excuse me, $8,985, and then the remainder, $43,015, is for fees due to the state. And you can see on this budget amendment that it is offset by additional collections above what's been budgeted. So, this budget amendment is supported by additional revenues and not asking for fund balance appropriation. And we did request this be walked on due to needing to pay the state this week. I know that was quite a few. Does anyone have any questions?
Can you give me a little bit of explanation regarding the register of deeds enhancement and preservation?
Yes, sir. So, the law provided that, and it's been several years ago, that certain amount of receipts be set aside and used for enhancement and preservation of deeds, so that can, and we use that through microfilm and imaging services like for cot. So, that's the type of expenditures that's in that line item for this specific budget amendment. There was an increase in microfilm usage that was not anticipated for the year, and so that's why they're requesting additional funds for this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we've got five minutes, so we'll go ahead.
Breeze along.
We'll breeze along. Budget Amendments next is motion to approve the Windermere Subdivision Preliminary Platte as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board, and Barry is here.
Yeah, Windermere, as mentioned, is a preliminary platte, so there's no improvements in place. This is the beginning of the process. Portis subdivision, they're proposing 17 lots out on Colmes Road, which connects Stony Creek Church Road over to Airport Road, right next to the jet port. This is 12.35 acres. The average lot size will be about 29,000 square feet. Planning Board has reviewed this request and recommends approval.
No interference from the airport?
No, and it actually, it actually falls kind of over a little bit, just right outside of that airport zoning area, so.
Okay, any questions?
And we'll go to the next, motion to approve the Drake Estates Preliminary Platte as recommended by the Planning Board.
Okay, and this one as well is preliminary, so there are no improvements in place at this time. This is 132 proposed lots. This is out on Ridge Road, which kind of connects off of Sand Hill Road between Highway 13 and Old Grantham, as you're heading out towards the Grantham community. So, it is a rather large subdivision, but there was a preliminary platte approved for this site quite a number of years ago that never moved forward, so someone has picked this back up and has decided to move forward with development of the property. There are about 70 acres. Average lot size is 18,800 square feet, and the Planning Board has reviewed this and recommends approval.
Okay, any questions? Which part district is that in?
This is in Marmack.
Is that the one on the? Is it off Providence? Where is that at?
Right before.
Okay, 100, yeah, okay. Where's got, it's already got, is that the place that's got one house in it?
It's got, got some duplexes.
So, that's the one that, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Barry.
We'll keep going right along. Number four, motion to approve the sale of surplus property at 209 and 213 North George, Georgia Avenue in Goldsboro jointly owned between the county and the city of Goldsboro.
This is an offer that we, my office received. Ms. Cole is a regular bidder at our foreclosure auctions, and she found this property that was jointly owned by the county and the city. It's over there. If you're going down Ash, before you get to the railroad tracks, before you get to St. Mark's, this on your right, if you're heading out towards the hospital out that way, so it's across from the gas station that's over there. She has offered $6,000. The combined tax value of all three parcels is just under $12,000. It's 11,610. She has put down the deposit and paid the required fee for advertising. If this is, if this is approved, it would go to the city of Goldsboro for approval.
So, that's across from the gas station?
From the gas station.
Railroad tracks.
Right. And then GWTA is just about a block away, half a block away. And the adjoining property owners have been notified by mail of the offer.
Okay, any questions on that?
Thank you.
And we'll try to get to the consent. Motion, number five, motion to approve the audit contract with number Shear and Nizell for the year ended June 30, 2022. Again, we are in the third, or second year of a three-year contract with them, but the LGC is now requiring the Board of Commissioners review audit contracts and approve them on an annual basis.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, and then item six.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2022-14, a resolution leasing property. Again, it is farmland that we have located, sorry, on Brian, whoops, yeah, on Brian Boulevard. So, with the rent being a.